At this time, I'd like to call our regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order, and call upon Commissioner Victor Leal to lead us in this picture.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, Lord. Lord, we ask for your guidance in this meeting. Allow us to make decisions that are wise. Allow us to listen to your word. Lord, be with all of our first responders. Be with each and every one of them, their families. Allow them to return to their homes safely at the end of their shift. Lord, we just reflect upon your name. We ask for forgiveness when we've been short. And we just offer this day to you. In Jesus Christ's holy name, we pray. Amen?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. Glad to have you here. And this time, I have a proclamation, which is item one, proclaiming October 8th through the 14th as Fire Prevention Week. All right, so I'd like to invite Chief Rubio and his staff to come on up here. Chief?
So we'd like to support our fire department by issuing this proclamation. Whereas the city of Harlingen, Texas is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Harlingen. Whereas US fire departments responded to 365,500 home fires in 2015 and according to the National Fire Prevention Association. Whereas US home fires resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths in 2015, representing the majority of 78 percent of all US fire deaths. And whereas newer homes are built to fight way materials that burn faster than older homes and burn. Whereas many of today's products finishing produce toxic gases and smoke and burn, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments. And whereas these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely and where people having as little as one to two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds. And whereas a home fire escape plan provides the skill set and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation. Whereas a home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each area, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside the home for everyone in the home to meet on exit. Whereas home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household. And whereas practicing a home fire escape plan twice a year ensures that every one in the household knows what to do in a real-life fire situation. Whereas Harlingen first responders are dedicated to reducing recurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Whereas Harlingen residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out", effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing the home fire escape plan with all members of the household, practice it twice a year. Therefore, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, hereby proclaim October 8th through the 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city and urge all the people of Harlingen to develop a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practice it twice a year to participate in the many safety activities and efforts of the Harlingen Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week. Do I present this to you?
Richard Alverton is our Fire Prevention Officer.
All right. And again, thank our fire department, not only for everything they do 24/7 for the residents of the city of Harlingen, but also for educating the public on how to prevent fires and how to escape a fire in the event that they have one in their home. So I think this is a great way to help spread the word, and hopefully our district will help with that, and the local media will also help. So would you like to say anything?
Yes, we were, we, the fire department, are going to be out there starting on the week of the eighth, starting on the week of the eighth. And we're going to be out there doing our presentations to the schools and encouraging students to practice at home. We'll be out there teaching all the families. And then, of course, we encourage the families to be practicing with their child as well. And I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
All right, get me a few. Item two is board recognition. I don't think we have any. Do we?
We called them, but they were not able to come.
All right, item three, special recognition to the city employees that assisted in the emergency preparedness due to Hurricane Harvey.
Mayor, commissioners, as you know, we've had a couple of hurricanes hit the United States in recent months, and our prayers go out to those affected by the storms. I didn't want, we didn't want to recognize all our volunteers and our employees who helped distribute and make sandbags in preparation for Hurricane Harvey. As a matter of fact, we had employees distribute 26,000 sandbags in less than two days, over 500 tons of sand, and over 2,000 man-hours. That is quite an accomplishment over a less than two-day period of time. But the impact of that is great, right? Our citizens get the sandbags they need for their homes and their properties. We're very proud of them, and we want to recognize them. And I would like to ask them to step up, our public works, employees, our parks employees, all the folks that have helped, if they come up front, I'd like to get a picture with the mayor and our city council, all our volunteers.
You know, why don't we draw you guys up here, Mayor? May I? Do you want us to stay here or go up? Up front. Get a picture with you gentlemen, all you all. I think our employees put forth a great effort, and I would want to recognize that, and all our volunteers. Do you want to get up here? Good seeing you.
Yeah, no, but I want to get to.
Spread out, spread out. Can we get a picture? I want to see you two guys. You're getting away back here.
Sometimes we take for granted what our public works at and what our folks out in the streets are doing day in and day out. But with 26,000 sandbags distributed over a less than two-day period of time, that is just quite a feat. And I'm very proud of them, and I believe proud of them too. Can I get in your? I didn't cover bags. Thank you, guys.
All right. Again, thank you to all the staff that worked so hard to get our city prepared. All right, now, item three, or rather, four, is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 5th through November 17th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion for approval.
All right, motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries the minutes are approved. I'm going to go to the consent agenda, items five A through Q. So a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item six, consider a possible action to approve a resolution of subjecting downtown improvement district budget for fiscal year 2017 to 2018.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. The item before you is the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget for the downtown improvement district. Total revenues proposed are $214,975. Total expenditures proposed are $245,687. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, it's our motion to approve the downtown budget.
Still moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item seven, consideration of possible action to approve or deny the bids offered receiving received on the following property struck off to Cameron County for itself and other tax and jurisdiction jurisdictions from a tax resale conducted on July 11, 2017.
John Gilott is here. He can make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff. What you have in front of you are four properties that were put up for resale at our July sale. If you recall, whenever we have a tax sale, those properties that do not sell at the regular tax sale, the first sale, they are struck off, and they are now the property of the city, the school, and the county, and your trustees for each other while that property is inventoried and put up for resale. We normally have two resales a year, July and also in December, and, I'm sorry, November. And these four are four of those properties that were struck off, and they were put up for resale. The good news is out of these four properties, you are owed a total of $19,081.58. The amount of the bids that came in are $18,359.90, so you're lacking about 800 bucks. If you recall, we've gone from maybe 13 to 14 cents on the dollar, to over 20 cents on the dollar, to 33 cents on the dollar, and this is pretty darn close to what you're owed. So these are the four properties. They range, there's one over by the hospital, there's one in original town site, one over by the old shopping mall, and another one, also in original town site, between 77 Sunshine Strip and Commerce. So these are the four properties that we're presenting, and we recommend that you accept the high offers. Be glad to answer any questions.
Yes. So the property tax, too, is 19 and change. The total bids were 18 and change. Is that divided by all three taxing entities?
What you're getting is the 18, nine. That's going to you. What you were owed was 19,000. You're getting 18,000. And that's tax, the levy, penalty, and interest.
Okay. Is there a motion to? Actual approval of now bids received on the following properties. That's the item on seven. Consideration of possible action to approve or deny bids offered received on the following properties. So it's, the motion is to approve the bids, recommendation is to approve the bids on the four properties, block 43, Fox Run subdivision, block 2, block 1, Nicholson Place, item 8, block 123, original town site, block 2, block 3, Hasselbauer Division, and 2.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion, second.
Richard, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 8, consideration of possible action on the resolutions approved of denying the bid offers received on the tax resale conducted on July 11, where you broke reference properties.
You've accepted the offers. Now, this is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the necessary paperwork to deed the property over to the new purchaser.
Okay.
Also a motion.
Second.
Right, a motion, second, to approve the resolutions on the bid offers. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve the first responder affiliation agreement between the city of Harlingen and South Texas Emergency Care Foundation to allow the Harlingen Fire Department to provide first responder services to the Harlingen citizens and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager Dan Serna. Yes, we have before you for your consideration and possible action to approve first responder affiliation agreement, again, between the city of Harlingen and South Texas Emergency Care Foundation, that will allow our Harlingen firefighters, fire department, to provide first responder services to Harlingen citizens and authorize the mayor to execute this agreement. This is, as required by the Texas Department of State Health Services, it's just a renewal. We've gone ahead and met with our city attorney, and we've revisited, or we visited with the attorney, and everything seems to be in proper order. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. And the South Texas Emergency Care Foundation is in agreement with the agreement?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10, is consideration of possible.
Also, Mayor.
Consideration of possible action to declare 10 self-contained breathing apparatus harnesses and 10 cylinders as surplus items, and donate this equipment to the Harlingen Solid and Finiscule, as training use for violent cadets attending HCSD Academy.
Yes, Mayor, we have for your consideration and possible, again, action to approve declaring the equipment that we just mentioned, self, 10 self-contained breathing apparatuses and harnesses. This equipment has been deemed non-eligible for use as frontline equipment. This is in total support of our Harlingen Firefighter Academy that we are very proud to say we're part of. We have also with us, Mr. Rahul Alvarez, with us here this evening from HCSD. This program will allow us to share this equipment with the cadets for further training. We have marked it and drilled the tank, so it would not be used in any live-fire-shaped form. It is just for practice in the classroom and anything that is not considered live-fire. So our recommendation is that this be approved, and we may be able to donate in support of the Harlingen High School Academy.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Still moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. We're proud to continue to support this partnership with the school district. This is a great, great way to use this equipment, so thank you.
Yes, sir, as are we. It just seems not too long ago, we were sitting here talking about it, and now we have it in full swing. So it's going to be such a tremendous benefit for our students of our community. Thank you so much.
How many students are enrolled currently in the program?
Right now, we have 15. It's a small cohort, and it's the first one right out of the gates, but we were very selective, and we wanted to make sure that we had 100 percent success. And so we screened our cadets very thoroughly and very fully to make sure that the task that they have to do isn't going to conflict with sports or any other academics. And so these are truly dedicated individuals, young men and women, who are going to pursue this as a career.
Okay, thanks again.
Thank you.
Item 11, consideration of possible action to approve a contract with Don Van Orme, Ramspor's Jr., to operate, manage, and supervise the HUB tennis center for fiscal year 2018, and authorize city manager to sign the contract. Javier?
Yes, Mayor, City Commissioners, this contract is the exact same contract that we approved last year. The only thing, of course, we changed is the term, which is the term limit for one year.
Is there a motion to approve the contract?
Still moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like sign. Nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 12, consideration of possible action to approve a contract with the city of Harlingen and Gorilla Tactical Sports LLC to operate recreational laser tag in city parks and the Tony Butler Golf Course, and to authorize the manager to sign the agreement.
Yes, Mayor, City Commissioners, this group had approached us about last year and was interested in providing this laser tag in the parks. And so we've met with him, we've taken it to the park advisory board. We think that it's a good event, or good, something to bring to the city. And the agreement is in your backup. The collection, or the compensation that we'll be collecting is 90. He'd be collecting 90 percent, we'll be collecting 10 percent. And the reason we did that was there's a lot of startup cost, and this is his first year. And so we told him if it was successful, then next year, then we would adjust those figures. Staff and park advisory board recommend approval.
Javier, who's the principal of Gorilla Tactical Sports?
His name is Joshua, I forget what his last name is. I think it's Lorilla.
And are they doing it in any other golf courses that we know of?
No. And the reason that we included the golf course, we may not have it there, but we just, we want it in the agreement in the event that we do, that it does offer it, and maybe bring some revenue to the golf course itself. But for the most part, it'll be, we'll be operating in the parks.
That wasn't being my question. How would you do it on the golf course without?
Well, the, what we were thinking about is on the Executive 9, the 19th through 27 is where we'd probably have it. A lot of these obstacles are mobile. Some of them are blow-up, and so they're very easy to put up and take down. So we met with Ed from the golf course, and we asked him, you know, could we do this? He said, you know, absolutely.
Are there competitions? Is this competitive?
There will be. As part of the registration, there'll be tournaments. Every, every five weeks, at the end of the five weeks, they'll have tournaments, and at the end of the year, they're going to have one big tournament, and inviting people from other communities to participate.
So they'll come from outside of Harlingen?
Yes. Yeah. And there's only one other group that does this, but what he does is he provides a service for parties. And so this is a little bit different, and so that's what we liked about. And he actually partnered with that gentleman, so.
And you did the background check, sales tax ID, legitimate company, et cetera, et cetera?
This, this company is new, so there's no history of Gorilla Tactics Sports.
Would we make them meet the same requirements that we do, like the Pony League and the Football League? They have to have insurance in those things?
Yes. Yeah, they will have to have insurance, and then he will have to submit reports to us, and then we'll review those as part of his payment to the city.
And when would this commence, should we pass this?
He's ready, so we have the term, would be October 1st.
And you, does he have insurance currently?
Yes.
Okay, so it's the agenda item, report from the staff, since the scheduling would need to be pre-approved by the parks director and the Tony Butler Golf Pro, to make sure there are no other, no conflicts of any other activities. So it's just going to be on an ad hoc basis, and say, we want to use, we want, we want to schedule a game or a tournament, we want to use one of the parks, and you're going to say, well, where are you going to put, where, I mean, where's the, like, the default place you're going to put up? What, is there, is it Tony Butler, or is it any of the other parks, or?
Yeah, there's several areas that we were thinking about, like Pendleton, there's a large open area in between the trail, south of the pool, that would, they would set up at. And the reason that we put that in there is if they want to use, let's say, for example, a, one of the baseball fields or one of the football fields, then we would have to check their schedule and make sure there's no conflicts. Or if they want to use Harlingen Baseball Stadium, then we'd have to check with the school district, make sure there's no conflicts there either.
How much time do they need per event, or does it vary? Is there a minimum?
Yeah, I think, I think he was saying it was 55 minutes per session, so.
No, they'll tell me the size of the track. Do they need, an acre, or do they need?
Acres? I don't, I don't know. He didn't mention that.
Okay, because that might be, there might be a minimum where the facility may not work because it's either too small.
Right.
Or it's too large, right? But we're not obligated to give it to them in a minimum number of times, or it's just, it's just going to be based on availability, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
And, and not to conflict with any other activities in the parks?
Correct. So he may be moving from park to park.
Okay.
And what age group is he interested in attracting, attracting?
You know, I know he gave that to us in his presentation a year ago, but I don't recall what that was. I know there is an age group that he wanted to keep it. He didn't want to go over, I think it was 18 years old, but I can't remember the minimum age group, so.
So are they going to have alcohol at their events?
No, no alcohol.
All right, are there any other questions for Javier? And is there a motion to authorize the contract with Gorilla Tactical Sports?
Still moved.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Item 13, consideration of possible action to authorize staff to enter into a contract with Kiko Construction utilizing interlocal purchasing systems in lieu of bids or RFP for the renovation of a pump room at Victor Pool.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, we went out and we're trying to solicit bids to, for the renovation of the Victor Pool, and so we found this construction company, Kiko Construction, who's on TIPS. And so we got a quote from them, and it is within budget, the grant budget from the Community Development Block grant. And so our recommendation is to contract Kiko Construction for the repairs of Victor Pool.
And what does renovation?
What it is, is the.
It's renovation of the pump room only?
Right. What we're going to do is we're going to replace the pumps and the filter system, and in the line that goes to the pool. That's the first phase. Second phase was to do any repairs outside, remove the deck, any of the, I forget what they call it, the, anyway, there's some other components of the pool that we would have to repair. It's part of the second phase.
This is an item, I believe, that has been requested of the CDBG board a couple of years in a row, and it's been a very needed item, and so I, or one, would like to commend them, and the park staff, and everybody that was involved, because it's, it's sort of one of those items that's long overdue, to get that pool back into shape.
This is the last pool that we would need to do this repair on.
And Kiko Construction, we've checked them?
Yes, they've done work for us before.
They have.
And, but they just recently got their TIPS membership, and so it's a benefit for us to use or go to the.
This is a known contract of ours, besides the TIPS.
Yes.
They didn't do the work at Pendleton, did they?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the contract with Kiko Construction?
Still moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 14, consideration of possible action to authorize staff to enter into a contract with Johnson Controls utilizing the interlocal purchasing system in lieu of bids or RFP for the air-conditioned control automation of retrofit at the Harlingen Police Department Building.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, we've had some issues with the AC over the years, and so we've received several quotes from different contractors, and Johnson Controls was the lowest bid that we received. And so we also want to use TIPS to be able to contract them to do the work at the Harlingen Police Department.
Is this something that, that have all the warranties exhausted themselves as far as we're concerned?
Yes.
Units, they've expired?
Yeah, and this is the control side of things, but yeah, the warranty was only one year.
Hold on, this doesn't include any?
For, for the controls. The units themselves still have some warranty.
Ten years.
But this is just the control part of it. We're having, we're having issues with some hot and cold spots in the building that we've been dealing with, and this is going to help us address some of that.
And where are the people that are going to do the work? Where are they basing?
And where are the people that are gonna do the work, where are they based out of?
Their, uh, a lot of their staff is here, um, they're local, two of their, their sales, uh, and one of their technicians is from Harlingen.
So they have somebody that can help us maintain it and service it once we get it up?
Yes, and what they would do is, is, of course, this is separate cause, but they would be able to, um, uh, we'd be able to contract with them to be able to do the service, uh, on the system.
These are all, like, computerized, it's a very technical thing.
Yes, and they'll, they'll provide that to us.
Johnson Controls, you know, this is what they do.
Yeah, I was like, this is the Johnson Controls that we're contracting.
Yes, sir.
And this is already budgeted?
Yes.
It's already budgeted?
Yeah, we had, we had to move money.
Yes.
To do this, this year.
Okay, um, is there a motion to approve the contract with Johnson Controls?
I, I motion, second.
Any other discussion, all those who have a say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item fifteen, consideration possible action to appoint a representative as the official member and alternate, and alternate member to the meeting of the Bay Area Board of Directors for fiscal year twenty seventeen and eighteen, or one-year term, October first, twenty seventeen, through September thirty, twenty eighteen.
What is that time of year again, Mayor Commission, uh, to appoint someone to the meeting of the Bay Area Board and, and, uh, I know Gabe wants to continue with the alternate since he's not here, uh, take my word for it.
And I'll continue and, and, you know, I, Gabe and I worked real well, we've had a couple of times where we've, we've had to tag team and it's worked out really well.
Are you the mem- are you the member?
I am the member, yes, and, and I'm, I'm the, I'm the secretary of the board, so I would obviously-
Is there a motion to appoint, uh, Commissioner Lial as the member and Hero Gonzalez as the alternate?
Summon, second.
All those who have a say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Gabe's gonna wish he had missed the meeting.
Item sixteen, consideration possible action to adopt the Title VI Non-Discrimination Plan.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, this, this is my, um, just by way of brief background, Title VI is a facet of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, federal law that raises discrimination, uh, on a basis of race, color, or national origin in programs that receive federal financial assistance, um, and in Texas, that's overseen by the Texas Department of Transportation, we received notification by the, by TechDOT that we needed to adopt additional, um, policies and procedures in order to comply with Title VI, this was not as a result of a complaint of discrimination against the City of Harlingen, it was apparently the result of a, of a random audit by, by TechDOT of local government members, they prom- TechDOT promulgates a model policy that I've, um, I've, I've modified to suit the City of Harlingen and, uh, basically it, it, uh, sets forth a policy that, that designates a, a Title VI coordinator for the city, uh, establishes a complaint procedure and adopts certain language that would be, uh, required to be included in, in contracts affecting projects that the city works on that receive federal funds and, and I'm recommending, and I'll answer your question.
I motion.
And I, I see that Rodrigo, the city planner will be the coordinator?
Okay, and, uh, I mean, this is basically a requirement to, uh, maintain our standing with TechDOT, so is there a motion to adopt the-
I motion.
Title VI Non-Discrimination Plan?
Second.
Motion, he's second, all those who have a say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries, item seventeen, consideration possible action to approve resolution of seventy Harlingen Water Works System Budget.
It didn't take that long, Tim?
Take that, no.
Six oh five?
Well, good evening, my pleasure to present the proposed fiscal year twenty eighteen budget for the Harlingen Water Works System, there have been some revisions that our board adopted last week in special meeting that revised that budget from what you heard about a month ago, uh, in an August workshop, presentation outlined, spent a little bit of time on the working capital schedule, briefly hit on the GAAP schedule of revenues and expenses, I wanna cover a few of the capital improvement projects that we'll be undertaking in twenty eighteen, uh, highlight the major expense changes from the previous, uh, budget, uh, we'll be talking about, uh, the direction of our capital improvement program, master planning initiatives and tools that we need and then summary comments, I'll jump right into the working capital schedule on revenue, it's been a hotter and drier spring, so our consumption has been up relative to what we budgeted, this next slide illustrates the challenge of budgeting for revenue, uh, this represents the last eleven years, annual water consumption, billion gallons, the low, three billion, the high, four billion, that's a thirty-three percent swing in consumption, uh, we do have a base rate, uh, but nevertheless, our revenue is still dominated by consumption, so it is a challenge, what we are doing, I think, is the laser in the middle?
Yes.
Okay, there we go, right there, so this is twenty eighteen, we're coming just below that eleven-year average, so let me just back up one slide and then talk, so the proposed, uh, we're actually expecting less revenue next year, uh, going toward wastewater, despite anticipating lower consumption, we are expecting revenue to go up, back in twenty fifteen, we implemented a rate change on our base, on our sewer base, over forty months, we have been increasing the base rate by ten cents every month and we're about five months away from completing that cycle in February of twenty eighteen, for that reason, we are expecting to see higher wastewater revenues, on personnel services, uh, we're proposing two new positions, uh, there are COLA and merit adjustments that are matching what the city has approved, contractual services are lower, uh, and there's some really large factors here in play, lower power costs that we'll talk about in a bit, uh, and then some new initiatives that are gonna support our master plan and operational efficiencies, overall, lower than what we budgeted, uh, and lower than what we experienced in the current fiscal years in actual expense, so if we look at our capital expenditures, our capital improvement projects and our capital assets, we're expecting to spend eight point two seven million dollars in twenty eighteen, included in that is two and a half million dollars that is carrying over from the current year budget, projects that we decided to move forward into twenty, uh, eighteen, so if we look at fiscal, the current fiscal year and our proposed fiscal year, and average our capital expenditures, our capital improvement program expenditures, we're gonna be spending about nine hundred and thirty million dollars more on an annual basis compared to the prior seven-year average, so I think that does show that we are starting to spend more money on our capital improvements to improve our asset condition and prepare for growth and more flow, so, well, we're expecting a modest increase in our working capital of about three hundred and ten thousand dollars and that is despite that two and a half million dollar rollover, uh, this is a, a table that compares what we presented about a month ago, uh, the red of the revisions that have been made in the last month, personnel services, we're seeing a two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar decrease in expenses and that's really coming because of a change we had proposed, change in our retirement plan, uh, we had taken that out of the budget, um, there are COLA and merit tweaks, uh, we wanted to match what the city was doing on COLA and merit, uh, we're also accounting for the actual premiums that were negotiated our original budget on health insurance, assumed a higher number, so we reconciled that, uh, the initiatives that we're talking about for master planning and some of those tools, we've had some prices come backs, we bumped up, uh, contractual services a bit from what you saw before by twenty thousand, uh, we also had some rains early in August that caused a structural failure of one of our lift stations that we had not intended to address, uh, in the original budget, we have an urgent need to do so, we've added fifty thousand to cover that, uh, in the next few months of the current calendar year, overall, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand of fewer expenses, revenues haven't changed from the original projection you saw in the workshop, regarding the, uh, the GAAP schedule of revenues and expenses, the only one that I wanna point out here is that, uh, the working capital summary doesn't address depreciation, GAAP basis does, we're showing an eight hundred fifty thousand dollar decrease from the current year budget to twenty eighteen, we realized that we were over-aggressive in depreciating our assets, uh, why that's important, we had a conference call with Moody's a couple months ago and we, we pointed this out to them and despite their indication, there were some pressures to downgrade our rating, we explained that, we also explained that we had been, um, doing in-house work that really underrepresented the value of our assets, as a result of that conference call, they retained our rating at double eight-two, they actually improved our outlook from negative to stable, so we consider that positive and, and depreciation change is a big part of that, okay, I'd like to turn to capital improvement projects, we won't go through all the lists, I do wanna highlight a few, uh, we are planning to purchase four hundred and thirty-two acre feet of water rights that are currently held by the Harlingen Irrigation District and they've been holding those and accumulating those over the last ten years, we have the right to purchase that, uh, they also, they have the right to sell it to other entities, what we're doing with this purchase is locking that in, into the Water Works name, we're paying a discounted rate, um, to, to achieve that, seven hundred and thirteen thousand total expenditure, so, I'd like to point out a couple sewer projects here, the Convention Center is, uh, groundbreaking is, uh, the groundbreaking has occurred, we are planning to construct, uh, the Brazil Road Sewer Line, twelve-inch line at an estimated cost, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, uh, we're gonna get that started this fall and wrap that up within the first couple months of the calendar year twenty eighteen, that's well in advance of when the Convention Center is going to need that, um, that project addresses growth, here's a couple of projects that address upgrading an existing, uh, infrastructure, twenty fifteen, there's a couple lines, excuse me, nineteen fifties era, there were a couple of projects, uh, that were built using clay lines, they've deteriorated, we want to replace those, the Ninth, the Ninth Street Sewer, starting north of Harrison and going down toward the canal, uh, also the Eleventh Street to seventy-seven Sunshine Strip, line is a twenty-seven inch clay, it goes underneath, uh, Sunshine Strip, we're concerned about that line, we wanna tackle that before it becomes an issue, we'll replace it with a thirty-inch line, probably, uh, using, uh, polyvinyl chloride PVC pipe.
If I may ask a question on seventy-seven, is that, are you going to dig up the highway or bore underneath?
We're gonna bore underneath that.
Okay.
A couple water projects, our, uh, water treatment plant off of Dixieland MF Runyon, uh, there's some clarifiers out there, uh, there are mechanisms and rakes and, uh, mechanical equipment in those clarifiers that we need to replace, they last twenty, twenty-five years, we're beyond that point, we actually budgeted that in twenty seventeen, we've rolled that into, carried it to twenty eighteen because we don't want this work to coincide with our higher demand, we're gonna start this in December, we've already got the contract, uh, signed and on board, uh, that will start in December, one point eight million dollar expenditure there, that's one of our larger projects, uh, on the pipeline side, we have a twenty-inch water transmission main that will connect an existing large transmission line on Roosevelt Road with Loop Forty-nine where we have another pipe, this is gonna improve circulation in our system, cost here is one point seven million, we've already been acquiring easements for this project and expect to bid this out, start construction in the fall, a couple other points here, we have thirty-eight water meters, three-inch and larger out in our system and they're getting quite old, so meter gets old, they under-report, by replacing those meters, we're going to recapture some of that revenue we should be collecting now, that payback should be relatively short, uh, final, you do not see this in the budget, uh, here's a couple of new fire hydrants, we expensed them in twenty seventeen, we have those fire hydrants, we've actually already installed two of them, we have ten more to go and that will fulfill the requirements under the annexation agreement, uh, out on the west side of town for those annexed properties, uh, we're gonna complete that, uh, about a year in advance of the deadline, so we're in good shape there, uh, this is a summary of some things we've talked about, highlights some other points, water rights we talked about, uh, there's a couple of new positions we, we really do need in management, also in human resources and, and risk management, uh, those are increases, uh, electric power consumption, we're gonna, we're expecting a six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar decrease largely due to the improvements that were made at the wastewater treatment plant, more efficient processes, uh, the city's also been part of a, a group of other cities that have negotiated a lower price per kilowatt hour for power, so those two factors combined lead to a very significant reduction, uh, in cost and that's a long-term, year after year, cost, the water audit, we've noticed that our water losses, the way we've been calculating those have been creeping up and we think it's time to bring in an expert to help us analyze where leaks may be occurring that, that are undetected also, under-reporting or under-reading of our water meters, uh, there are a number of Valley Cities who've done that, we think it's time to start that, this is a one-time cost, uh, GIS, uh, Geographic Information System, GPS survey and master planning initiatives, we're, we're looking at spending some significant money, uh, to prepare for that initiative and I'll touch on that a little bit, uh, but you can see that's not a, a minor, uh, a minor investment, we talked about depreciation, we talked about large meter replacement, uh, COLA and merit pay adjustments are matching what the city is doing, uh, credit card and, uh, administrative fees, our board adopted a policy and we implemented it after the twenty seventeen budget, so we're going to realize the recovery of a lot of those fees that we have been paying when a customer pays their bill with a debit card or a credit card, that'll, that'll reduce about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of our cost, so our capital improvement program direction, uh, over the last ten years has really focused on treatment plants and you're aware that we commissioned that wastewater treatment plant earlier this year, you saw a project that we're conducting at the water treatment plant, we're, we're getting into a place where we've upgraded, uh, conditions that needed help, we're also providing for future capacity, where we're moving now, the next phase is really looking at our pipelines and, and we need a master plan to do that, we've been tackling that based on knowledge of failing, uh, systems and pipelines, but we haven't really done a comprehensive plan using best practices, a master plan's gonna help us to not only prioritize and identify projects but also schedule them so that the value of our assets is outpacing the depreciation so that we see growing assets, that's a really important metric for our bond rating agencies, um, and Moody had pointed that out when we visited with them, uh, that plan is gonna use hydraulic models, they'll look at land use projections, population projections, also looking at the results that come out of the water audit, um, the other thing it's going to do, although we don't have an immediate need, but bond issues and future rate increases will also be guided by that master plan, uh, may need to start looking at that in the next decade sometime, not an immediate need now, uh, there are some tools that we want to have in place to assist the master plan, that's the Geographic Information System database, uh, GPS survey, we're gonna go out with our crews with this GPS equipment, survey manholes, bowels, uh, hydrants, uh, meters, flush-out connections so that we know exactly where on the face of the, the earth those things are, we have maps but they're not that accurate and when we turn to a consultant to help us with the master plan, we want to give them a complete and accurate set of data contained in a geographic information system, so we budgeted those, uh, the database, the consultant's support to help that migration and then the equipment, uh, on the GPS side of things, uh, we anticipate starting that GPS work here in the next couple months, um, the GIS, uh, component may take a little bit longer, but, um, you've seen the schedule before, the bottom line is that the master plan, we expect to have published right around the early part of twenty twenty and that will advise our future budgets and our CIP program going forward, and so in summary, we, we think the Water Works really is in a solid financial position and that was backed up by, uh, we think Moody's findings, uh, we have modest personnel services that are matching the city adjustments, a couple new positions, we'll continue our CIP projects based on what we know and what we can see, coming for growth, um, we will develop tools to help us master plan, we'll kick off that master plan in about eighteen months and once that's in place, we expect that our CIP expenditures will outpace even what we're seeing with the increases, uh, over the last couple years, so, uh, with that, we are recommending approval of this budget and, uh, be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, on the, um, water rights.
Yes.
You had a hundred and forty-seven thousand from last year's budget, we, we don't actually budget it in there because we don't know what we're gonna lease, is that, I noticed you didn't have it in there.
That's right, that's right.
And I thought I'd at least bring that up.
Yeah, that's a, it's a good point.
We're buying the rights, but what are we doing with it?
I, I, I cut it out for the sake of time, but, uh, since you bring that up, uh, those other costs remaining relatively flat, but you notice the actual is higher for twenty seventeen because we were able to lease some of our surplus water, we typically have surplus water, but we are not guaranteed that we're gonna have somebody call and take our offer to buy that surplus water and that's why we show that as zero, uh, we are continuing to pursue those opportunities however.
Okay, and those, um, whatever it was, four hundred and thirty-two acre feet of water rights that the Harlingen Irrigation District had, they've held those since the beginning, since nineteen adjudication in fifty-four or whenever that was, correct?
I-
They're municipal?
They are municipal, what I believe those are, that's the accumulation that has happened since a- What I believe those are, that's the accumulation that has happened since a bill was passed in 2008. That gives the local entity the first right to purchase those water rights. I may have a few details off. I know Darrell had worked that. There was an agreement between Darrell and Wayne Halbert over the Irrigation District. They didn't feel a need to tidy that up, but as they retired, they said, "We really need to take, take care of that, transfer those into the name of the Water Works." So.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Very good presentation. I think, Charlie, I think Harlingen's long-term and long-time planning and vision on the acquisition of water rights has really positioned this community very well to supply water to residences and businesses for a long time in the future. We're much in a position that similar to our neighbors, but I think that's a testament to our sick fathers from long ago. Is there a motion to approve the Water Works budget?
Some move. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item 18, consideration and possible action to allow a license to encroach 6.5 feet in the city, 6.5 feet of right-of-way along 27th Street to allow for off-street parking for single-family residents. The property located at 2301 Rainbow Circle, bearing a legal description of block 12, block 3, Skyview Terrace, Subdividing. Agreed on?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. The applicants are also, the property owners are requesting a license to encroach 6.5 feet into 6.5 feet. That's the right-of-way along the 27th Street to allow for off-street parking for an existing single-family residence. The subject property has 60 foot, 60 feet by 120 feet, and this is the area that we're talking about encroaching. The applicant is proposing to enclose their existing double garage and convert it into an additional room right here, which is costing the vehicles that would normally be inside the garage to be parked on their already existing driveway, and 6.5 feet of that would be enclosed. So, really, the encroachment is coming about because they are choosing to close the garage doors, so they need somewhere to park the vehicles. There will be no changes to the configuration of the existing driveway, and the request was reviewed by our engineering department and all appropriate utility companies without... Yes, sir.
I'll wait, I'll wait.
And staff recommends approval of the request with the condition that the city crews and/or utility companies will have access to the right-of-way in the event of an emergency. If city crews and/or utility companies' equipment damage any improvements within the right-of-way or performance of work, the applicant shall be responsible for any repairs and future repairs on the right-of-way.
So, there you go. So, the city paves that street, and we have to put in a sidewalk.
Thank you.
Would those cars be extending out into the sidewalk?
Yes, sir.
What are they trying to do? Are they trying to put a, did they enclose the pickup garage? I know, but are they trying to put an arm or something?
No, no.
Just that the vehicles will extend into that easement area.
So, what would happen? How long is this license to encroach?
It's, we can revoke it at any time.
That would be my only concern, but, because I know this neighborhood doesn't have sidewalks, at some point in the future, we're required.
We've met with engineering-
If they're going to have to park on the street.
Well, here's the thing, when they built the house, there was probably a restriction that they had to have a garage, right? That's why, I mean-
Or they just wanted a garage.
That would have been through a deed restriction.
Right. So, now they're trying to get that.
And we don't enforce deed restrictions.
As we're overlaying streets, we're now putting in sidewalks, and-
That's a problem.
They were made aware by engineering, and they're agreeing that it, whenever it needs to be revoked, they will have to be revoked at that time.
Well, regardless, if you have a sidewalk and have plenty of room, you're going to walk behind a car that's in somebody's driveway.
Right.
This way, you're just going to walk a little bit to the left and go around the back of it.
If you look at the picture, the bumper of the car extends out of the street.
Right. But it's paved.
Correct.
Okay, is there, is there a motion to allow this revocable license to encroach?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed, motion carries.
We have one opposed.
One opposed.
Oh, I'm sorry. One opposed. Item 19, board appointments.
None. I have one for Ruben Delarosa, Deloria, and Davis to the community, or re-acquaint one of the Harlingen community's board members.
All right. Is there a motion to approve board appointments?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed. Let's go ahead and move Citizen Communication, item 25, item 25, Citizen Communication.
Mayor, I have your board calls, and to speak regarding police collective bargaining.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, visitors. My name is Lenore Combs. I am the president of the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. We work with the police department at various events and things, and we would like to represent our group and say that we are in support of the negotiations for their contract with raises and retirement and hope for a favorable outcome. They go above and beyond to protect and to serve, and they deserve it. They are all very committed officers. They contribute to Harlingen's safety and welfare for our citizens, and so I think it would be a win-win for you and for them. Their families are here, and that would encourage their families and longevity, and I think we would all enjoy that. So, we hope you pass it through them. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have John Combs.
Mayor, City Manager, Councilman Hall. My name is John Combs, and I'm a member of the same organization, Citizens Police Academy. We probably know the policemen a little better than the average citizen because we work with them daily, but we've worked with them in some very benign situations like National Night Out and so forth, but we know that we have a group of very sturdy, very brave, and very trustworthy Harlingen Police Department. We support them 100% on our daily volunteer. We spend our time supporting them, and we appreciate them being there. The only thing that I know of that will bring a bead of sweat to those brave people's forehead is a domestic violence call at 2:00 AM in the morning or a contract negotiation today. So, we appreciate them and take you easy on them. Thank you.
Thanks.
Connie Salas.
Connie Salas, 613 Salem Street, here Harlingen. Under all Mayor, City Commissioners, and all present here today, I'm here because I want to make an announcement that I feel from the heart that I want to thank all Commissioners that have been involved with me, best and present Commissioners. Tonight, I want to tell them, thank you for your support, for all that you have done to help me coordinate some of the events and some of the things that I feel that are very important to our community. For that, I want to tell you that on that night, I was very, very, very surprised to receive a copy, a copy that I had mentioned to our beautiful secretary there, Amanda. I said, "Gee, I wish I could have just a copy of that beautiful written proclamation for our city during Hispanic Heritage Month from our mayor and the city commissioners." And then, on Saturday's event, I was given a beautiful, beautiful, not only a copy, but the actual proclamation that was given, a copy was one was given to the Council of Mexico. And because I received some calls from him over the weekend saying how beautiful it was watered and all that, and he was going to put it in his main office for everybody to see, I felt that I also wanted to say, "Thank you, Mayor, for doing what you did on that night." But I do believe and I feel that you will all appreciate if you will not say no. I wish I can have this proclamation hang here at City Hall, too, for future mayors, future Commissioners. I mean, to see that during the month of Hispanic Heritage Month, this was given to the Hispanic community here in Harlingen. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, and I want to say from the bottom of my heart to all the people that have supported me and helped me in the past, especially Amanda, all the work that you have done. Everybody here, Commissioner Leal, Mesmer, for you saving my life and because of you me being here tonight, okay? But everybody, Mr. Serna, I would have never done what I have done for the city and many other events if it wasn't for your support. Mayor, thank you, thank you, thank you, and I hope you will take this and do what should be done. Let everybody know. It's a great example, and we really appreciate it.
You keep that one, we'll make another one.
Okay, yeah. No.
You keep that one, we'll make another one.
I just want to make sure it's here in City Hall. Thank you.
Can't print money, but we can make proclamations. All right. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Salas and Juan, for all you do for our community. Item 20, executive closed session on the following items, pertaining consultation pursuant to Section 551.071 Texas Government Code to provide legal advice and counsel in connection with certain collective bargaining issues contained in the notice of intent to bargain by the duly-recognized majority bargaining agent, the city law enforcement officer, the Harlingen Police Officer Law Enforcement Association, and the Harlingen Professional Firefighters Association, and the pursuant to Section, Chapter 551, Subchapter D of TCA Government Code, Sections 551.071 and 087, to discuss or deliberate financial or other incentives to business prospect, known as Project Forest, seek legal advice or city attorneys. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like, signed. Ladies and gentlemen, the city commission is going to meet in executive session with their attorneys, and there could be some action on items after we return. Ladies and gentlemen, we are out of executive session at 7:08 PM. We're going to go, we're going to pass item 21. We're going to go to item 22, which is consideration of possible action concerning collective bargaining agreement with the Harlingen Firefighters Association.
Mayor and Commissioners, as you know, Mr. Azun and I served as the chief negotiators for the city on the Harlingen firefighter contract, and we had previously gotten a tentative agreement on a three-year contract. I'm advised tonight that there was a final vote on this matter by the majority bargaining agent and the firefighters, and that they have approved the contract, subject to the very last, I'll call it, the tweaked version of the pay table that was submitted to us-
That's correct.
-as the final thing. So, I'll just let the representative, you know, tell you about that vote, and then we will be getting some kind of written correspondence on that.
Thank you, sir.
Darrell Loftus, the Vice President of the Harlingen Professional Firefighters Association. So, here tonight to let you all know that the membership took the vote. The last pay table change that was acknowledged with differentiation in pay scale based on rank, there was, the membership majority approved that contract, and it's just going to be subject to the formalities of the signatures after. If you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them. Thank you so much. Appreciate the time and energy and the opportunity to step forward and bring this to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Rafael Torres, who's also from the state TSAFF organization, sent me a text letting me know that we had a done deal. He thanked Mr. Serna for his efforts on this behalf, and so, we will take care of the logistics of filling out the numbers and getting the final document prepared for signatures by the fire union and also by the city, and then we'll be done for three years on this contract.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We're going to take action.
Yes, we take action to approve the TA agreement subject to-
Motion to approve the contract as approved by-
As approved by the fire union-
Fire, Fire Friday's union.
And the city's negotiation team.
That's the motion.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed. We want to express our appreciation to the hard work of the collective bargaining teams, and we're glad that we're able to get a contract that's satisfactory to both sides.
Absolutely.
That's a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you all. Take care.
Next item, item 23, is consideration of possible action on an ordinance related to pay for Harlingen Police Officers.
Mayor Commissioners, with the expiration of the police bargaining agreement and any built-in extensions or evergreen provisions that will occur at the end of this month, September 30 of this month, we won't have a contract in place. The Police Officers Union has communicated to us that they have not approved or ratified any agreement that we've reached at table, and so we will be without a contract. Under those circumstances, state civil service law requires us to approve by ordinance certain elements of their pay. We've prepared an ordinance to be approved in case there was no agreement with the Police Officers Union that puts those elements in place. Essentially, it continues the same fiscal provisions that are in the last year of the police contract in terms of base pay and all other supplemental, what I call supplemental pay, is assignments in order and so forth, that will essentially maintain the status quo as to those, which we are now, in the absence of a contract, legally required to do by ordinance, and so we're asking that the city approve, approve that ordinance.
The only qualification that I would make to that, also just because I worked on the actual ordinance, Mr. Azun, I worked on the contract, and I, when we saw that we were going to need this ordinance, we worked on it. So, because this is a unilateral action, the authority for this is under Chapter 143 of the Local Government Code. That's the civil service statute. There are some things that were in the contract that, under the bargaining law, the parties are able to modify as far as 143, okay? So, we had made some modifications, some special rules for Harlingen that related to the certified lists before the Civil Service Commission that related to some of the pay and benefits and other arrangements that were allowed under bargaining law. Because we don't have a deal, however, some of those things are going to fall away. We do not have the unilateral authority to implement some of those things. So, for example, there's an article in the contract called a holiday pay article, which had some special provisions for pay of officers. There is no authority under 143 for us to implement that on our own. So, the way we're handling that particular item in the ordinance is we're basically going back to the city's personnel policy manual. So, on the things that the Chapter 143 allows us to implement on our own and maintain the same, we are, this ordinance does that. On the things that we are not able to do that because we don't have a contract, we are defaulting to the city's personnel manual so that the officers will be in the same position as all the other civilian employees, and this ordinance will stay in place until we get a new contract in place at some point in time. So, I just want to make that, that make clarification. It's, we've kept it in place as much as we can legally do so unilaterally through the ordinance action. I don't want any confusion about that.
Is there, is there a motion to approve the ordinance relating to pay for Harlingen Police Officers as proposed by the city attorney?
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed, the motion carries. Item 24 was passed, and it's no longer necessary.
Since it's an ordinance, I'll go ahead and read the caption to satisfy that requirement.
Okay, I'll follow.
An ordinance of the city, a commission of the city of Harlingen, Texas, authorizing the continuation of pay and benefits for the city's sworn law enforcement personnel as per requirements of Chapter 143 Texas Local Government Code. Such authorization begins on October 1- Such authorizations begin on October 1, 2017, in the event that the city and the majority bargaining agents are not able to complete a new collective bargaining labor agreement after the current labor agreement expires on September 30 of 2017 and providing for administrative guidelines.
Do we need to vote again?
Vote again. Votes are voted. We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like side. Motion carries. Item 24 is unnecessary, and we've already done item 25, so ladies and gentlemen, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.